I will now call to order the Middletown School Committee, meeting at 5:30 on 17 July. Will the clerk please conduct roll call and report on the quorum status?
Chair Greg Hewitt.
Present.
Vice Chair Wendy Heaney.
Here.
Member Teresa Spangler.
Here.
Member Tammy Holden.
Here.
Clerk Bill Ness, present. We have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Please all rise and join us for the Pledge of Legions. Public forum. Individuals may address the school committee on only one relevant education-related topic included on the agenda that is not related to personnel or job performance nor revealing personally identifiable information regarding students. Individuals may speak for no longer than five minutes and must submit a public participation form to the school committee clerk before the start of the meeting. Non-agenda items discussed in the public forum will not be voted upon at this meeting. Do we have any?
I don't have any. Mr. Chair, no.
Do we have any correspondents?
I have none.
Student representative? Do we have a student?
Summer vacation.
Good for them.
Consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Action items. The superintendent recommends the school committee consider and vote on the second and final reading of the 3070.1 credit card use policy and 3070.2 use of credit card protocol.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made to consider and vote on the second and final reading of the 3070.1 credit card use policy and the 3070.2 use of the credit card protocol, and it has been seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Just that Billy addressed it last month and went over why and how and all that, so there's nothing to add to that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I heard you.
We heard you, Mrs. Montbelaas. Thank you.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Can you hear me, Ari?
I can hear you. And I'm deaf.
Nobody else.
We would do better. Need a sign that says, "Speak into the mic." Thank you, Barbara.
Superintendent recommends the school committee consider and vote to approve the second and final reading of the policy for 9130 energy management and conservation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made to consider and vote to approve the second and final reading of policy for 9130 energy management, and it has been seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Just to reiterate, this is a policy that's pretty standard across the state and aligns with, you know, RIDE guidelines about energy management in the schools, so pretty typical here.
And a new policy.
And a new policy. Correct. Second reading here.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Superintendent recommends the school committee consider and vote to approve the job description for the Assistant Director of Student Services.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made to consider and vote to approve the job description for the Assistant Director of Student Services, and it has been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. There is no old business. There is no new business.
I'm happy to, just a little clarification on that. That's a just.
I thought Billy might want to say something.
That's fine. After the fact, it's fine with me. So this is a position that we've prioritized moving forward this year. This is, you know, we have a new director of special education or director of student services right now, but in the last two years with Director Burkett, this is something that we've talked about with administration as a priority for us, just as far as managing the caseloads, I think. as a priority for us, just as far as managing the caseloads, I think. All principals would probably agree that there's a lot of time spent in special education meetings and a lot of efficiencies that can be made as far as services provided for kids and the development of programs. And this is just an essential position that we prioritize as a team at the beginning of the year. So we've been working on this for some time.
Right. Thank you. I will now turn it over to the superintendent for his report on personnel enrollment, financial curriculum, student services, technology, facilities, and information.
Sure. So I'll start off with personnel. We are in the, not many right now, but we started off with hiring some coaches, a few late additions to Be on the Bell, and a couple resignations. As far as the financial report, I am going to ask our new, our new business manager, Mr. David Owles. David's settling into his new office and has hit the ground running. As you know, we've been without for some time, and Mr. Hyde was with us as a consultant, but it's great to have David in the office now, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Hewitt and members of the committee, and thank you for this incredible opportunity. I'm honored to join Superintendent Niemeyer and the team in supporting such a committed and high-performing school district. It has been a pleasure collaborating with Mark, Anthony, and Patrick through the shared services model, and I'm confident we're building a strong, responsive business office, one that strategically maximizes resources to keep teaching and learning at the forefront while effectively serving our staff and community. As we move forward, the closeout of FY25 is well underway with the shared services team leading the effort. Simultaneously, we're in the process of uploading the approval, the approved FY26 budget into the new MUNIS system to ensure timely vendor payments and provide accurate, transparent reporting to Superintendent Niemeyer and the school committee. I look forward to working together in support of our schools, our students, and the broader community we proudly serve. Related to the budget for FY25, you have the June's budget to actual expenditures and revenue reports. Just keeping with the previous business manager's report, I kind of kept the numbers that he was providing you the same. June GL budget is 42 million, that's a number that you've previously seen. The year-to-date expenditures are 40,288,436. The general fund balance is 2,067,941. The encumbrance is 1.7, 1,730,865, with a balance, a June GF balance of, general fund balance of $337,082, which is less than a percent of the total budget. Please note that the year-to-date expenses total 44,170,256, while the revenue to date is 43,105,091, resulting in a shortfall of approximately $1 million. This variance will be offset through reimbursement requests to RIDE for our CRP funds for the entire year, as well as Medicaid reimbursements. We are actively working with the staff and the shared service team to review encumbrances and identify purchase orders that should be released. Progress has been a little bit slower than we anticipated due to the transition between accounting systems. As a result, we expect to have a clearer picture of how the FY25 will end in August. Related to FY26, again, there's not much to report on other than we're putting those numbers into the MUNIS system. So that's, that's pretty much.
So the reconciliation, are we going to find any money there, do you think?
I think it's too early to tell at this point.
Okay. So before our next school committee meeting, I would hope that that would be done. I mean, I know you're new, I know it's a challenge with shared services, but we just got to get it done.
Yeah. I think we'll be done by August.
Yep.
We need it to be done by August.
Yeah.
Good.
Bye.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. I just had a question.
Very good.
Yeah, so I appreciate the, welcome first, David.
Thank you.
Welcome. Looking forward to seeing you at our meetings. I appreciate the verbal explanation. In our packets, in the backup for this, are the expense, only the expense reports and revenue reports. I'd prefer to have like that written, what you're, so if you submit that maybe next time, that would be helpful to people that may be listening, rather than have to rewind, fast-forward. There's a document that they can refer to and say, hey, this is what he said, and just something we can maybe capture easier. So then you don't have to read everything word for word up there. By the way, I appreciate you doing this your first time, but trying to save some.
Got it. Great.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
On a separate note, I did want to kind of give a financial update on, I believe I had shared with all the members an article related to federal funding for schools and anticipated shortfalls there. So as far as that goes, I'm just going to go off the cuff on this one. We were notified by the Commissioner of Education that we are looking at possibly not receiving Title 234, and there's also some adult education money that's out there that is not going to be affecting us. Title 2 is a large pot of money, about $120,000 that is specifically earmarked for professional development. This is something that we rely on heavily. So Michelle Fonska and I have been working to kind of come up with a plan. You know, it's not definitive yet. I think there's some, I think there's actually a lawsuit going on, so we're hoping this gets resolved. I mean, we always hope it gets resolved. You know, you hope for the best and prepare for the worst. So in anticipation of the beginning of the school year, a lot of the instructional work and we have some, we've talked about having some instructional leaders in the schools that all require, requires payment for that extra work. So anticipating that, we're looking at what money do we have left in Title 2 this year that we can roll over to next year, RIDE's making an exception there. So we are kind of making plans, and we're also making some adjustments to what those positions look like so we can continue the work without being, you know, we can't just sit and wait and hope that this is going to come. So we're hoping it comes, but on the other hand, we're preparing for what may happen.
So what I recall you telling us is, this is clearly surprise, doesn't have, usually the money's available by now.
Yes.
And you're actively spending it or allocating it.
And we've already budgeted to do that, yeah.
And do that. So when might we see, I mean, what's the latest, I guess, if there is any?
It's hard to say. So we've had a couple of updates with the commissioner. They're pretty spur of the moment. You know, they're short notice, like as soon as they get information, they give it to us. So like I said, I think there's, some of the, some of the states are, you know, involved and are looking into litigation about it. They're asking superintendents to reach out to senators across the country to kind of push on this, that this is not the right way to do this, and it's definitely affecting kids. So it's going to bring, it potentially could bring, it could be a lot more damaging for other districts. We're very fortunate in that we don't have positions tied up in this money. There are school districts that have, you know, actual positions tied up in this. So in that sense, we're good because it doesn't, it's not going to cause a tumble down within positions within the district, but on the other hand, it's going to, it's going to definitely put a little bit of a dampener on professional development opportunities. We can't follow through with the plan as we had it, or as we had intended, so we're going to have to adjust, which we're doing.
Thank you.
And it's not just the professional development though, right?
No.
Isn't it the MLL and the.
It is. It is, but you know, we've been, you're right. So we've been very fortunate, like as far as the MLL, it's, the money's attached to that are significantly less. And we have been doing so much work through our grant with Van Buren that I think we're going to be, essentially, we're good in that area. We're not at risk of being in violation. I mean, like we said before, we've had a lot of discussion about this. I think we're doing a great job in kind of leading the work in that, particularly in suburban schools. So we're good there. We can, we can make that all work. It's the PD that we're really kind of worried about. That's what we're really focused on at this point.
Just another thing, I guess. I recall years ago there being a Middletown Education Foundation, or, and I know it's been not active.
Nope. It is not. I believe since COVID.
I think that's something we, I mean, that seems to be like a good resource for us, potentially for the future. So, you know, whatever, whatever we can do to bring that back to being, I know it takes work, it takes effort, but I feel like there's, at least my recollection of following it in the past, is that there are, that's a valuable place to look for monies and other resources that, you know, we could certainly use going forward. I know it's not as easy as just pushing a button and it happening, and for whatever reason, because of COVID or whatever, it fell aside. But I know other districts have active foundations that they work with. You know, you mentioned Van Buren, not that, I mean, that's private, I get that, but I'm thinking, you know, what can we do to, you know, get some, rally some people? You know, I think you and I, Billy, at one point, we talked about, you know, the foundation, but also things such as the Alumni Association, the sports athletic group. I mean, there are groups out here, you know, where, as I anticipate the new school being built, and I says, we'll talk about that shortly, the excitement will build. And I, you know, I think we can, there's an opportunity to capture some of that and kind of hit the reset button, if you will, with some of these programs. So, you know, I'm willing to do my part, but I just figured I'd put it on the table as part of this discussion.
Yep. Appreciate it. And of course, we're always, Assistant Superintendent Fonska is always looking for grants, something that we're constantly exploring. So yes, absolutely noted.
Thank you.
Okay. So for teaching and learning, AP scores are in. We've offered 18 different sections of advanced placement courses. Over 272 tests were taken this year. A three is the target score, a three or higher. And since 2021, we've increased dramatically in the number of tests that have scored a three or higher. So in 2021, 50%, 57% of the tests taken scored a three or above. And this year, in 2025, 81% have scored a three or above. So that's great. In many cases, that counts for a college credit, not in everyone, but many. So 80% of the tests are, you know, are three or above. I've mentioned that we've been doing work. We have a connection with the Annenberg Institute at Brown University, and they reached out and offered to look at our, you know, we talk a lot about our Be on the Bell program. So they've offered to reach out and Michelle and I specifically sat down with them and talked to them about like, how can we look at our, you know, we love Be on the Bell, we've talked about it, we prioritize it in our budget. So what can we do basically to make it better? Like where are we and how can we improve? So Annenberg has worked with us to start with surveys, basically to find out, you know, where we are and what are we looking at as far as, you know, what parents and students feel about that. So in your packet, you'll see there's demographic data. You'll notice the MLL population has been very engaged in these surveys. So a large percent, keep in mind, a large percentage is from these families. I think we can thank Megan Mainzer for that. She does a great job of outreach and working with that community. But that is terrific. It's notable. So why do folks participate? The overwhelming number of families and students cite they're participating for academic purposes. You know, we do have an SCL component, and that's noted in the survey, but almost, the overwhelming majority of our folks are here for academic support. We've highlighted the areas of focus that kids and parents are looking for support in, primarily math and ELA, science is a close third. When we speak in the survey about belonging, right, like a lot of the social emotional components, we want kids to feel welcome in school and feel a sense of belonging. So we see some positive numbers, and the numbers are consistent across groups. So it's not just, not just girls, not just boys, it's not just MLL students or all students, it's everybody. Kids feel that they, generally, they feel like they have friends in school, which is a positive number. That's always a great thing. You want kids to feel connected in that way, and they're connected. So when we look at the student experience, one gap area that we've noticed, or I've identified, is that middle school kids specifically do not feel that learning is fun. So as a former middle school principal and Mr. Haas here, and I see Ms. Wood back there, like I think that that's developmentally, I don't want to say appropriate, that's the right way to say it, but that's, I say that's fairly typical. So, yeah, it is par for the course. So, and it wasn't terrible, but it was just that, that was one data point that stuck out, but not surprising. Another interesting data point is that students believe they learn better with a partner. So this one was pretty impactful for us, right? Let's see, so, sorry, I lost my spot. So this speaks to like, when we think of curriculum instruction, it speaks to lesson design and method of instruction. So how can we build confidence, increase the value that kids place on their learning, and then the enjoyment and satisfaction of achieving their goals, their academic goals? So it speaks to strategies that we look to employ as a district, and that our work in the coming year will be focused on just that. So we've, you know, we're in the planning stages for, we're pre-planning for our admin retreat to work with principals, and then which will be trickling down into the schools. So that's, that's something we've been discussing anyway, but it was very reinforcing to see that. Let's see. Last item was the overwhelming majority of our families believe that their kids enjoy school, they like school. The schools care for their children, and we have supportive communication around their child's education. So two strong points. You know, not every student, we're never going to get every student, but in a survey like this, it's reinforcing to see that kids are enjoying school, they're enjoying going to Be on the Bell, and parents are generally satisfied with the communication that they get from the parent or from the school. So that's, that's a positive. And there's a whole slide deck in your, in your, in your package that you can see there. From student services, so from Director Leslie Brow, who couldn't make it today, she actually is out of town, but I'm looking forward to meeting her. We've had a, we've had a good, we've had, actually, we've had a great month in this department. Some key updates, we've been preparing for 25, 26 school year by assessing programming needs and individual supports. So we're building programs, we're looking at student need. Director Brow's been pawing through IEPs at the granular, granular level too. Sorry, I can't talk today, I apologize. But just evaluating what we need to do for the next school year to make sure we're better serving our students. Some of the summer priorities are finalizing caseloads for upcoming school year, planning professional development for the fall, and maintain compliance with state and federal regulations. I know we have 68 students right now in our extended school year. We often talk about that as ESY at Godday, so kind of in partnership at the same time as Be on the Bell. We have 68 students enrolled right now, so that's a big number. Also, Director Brow has begun meeting with administrators and staff to ensure high-quality special education services. That is the game. That is what we're doing. So we've been laser-focused on that, so we're really pleased with that.
Just a question.
Go ahead.
If I could. Okay. Just curious, with the assistant director job, how quick do you think that will get filled?
I, this is the.
Could use some help, right?
Yep. This is the hiring season right now. So the job has been posted, we'll let the job go for two weeks. You have to let it remain posted for two weeks, and then we anticipate interviewing the day after. We're moving right along. Sooner we can do that, you know, it'd be great to have that person, we would love to have that person on board for our admin retreat and kind of get a leg up on everything in anticipation of the school year. So before school, for sure, is our goal. From the technology department, from Director Anice, highlights, we've installed three new computer labs funded through the CIP and from grants optimized for innovation and collaboration. So three really powerful computer labs are going in, two of them at the middle school and one at the high school. So we're excited about that. They've been supporting the Be on the Bell summer program with devices, access, staff, onboarding, technical assistance. You know, we have folks that are actually coming from out-of-district work, so it's not just folks that work here and already have a laptop and a login, so there's a whole other component that goes with that. The department secured a $100,000 grant from the 21st Century Technology and Equipment Fund, which was earmarked for STEM and CTE expansion, so 3D printers, robotics kits, and other project-based technologies. So that's exciting. It's a big win. I think there's a lot of, a lot of thought going to this now of how are our middle school programs, which are fantastic, feeding into our high school CTE programs? You know, there's a connection there, so. But they've maintained their emphasis on creating future-ready, technology-rich learning environments, so that's.
Question. Sorry to keep asking questions, but I figured that was the time to do it. Because what interests me here, and thank you, David, for the updates on, you can, I guess you can explain it. I don't need, David, I'm just curious. Computer lab, is it a classroom, is it a station, workstation? What was it?
So, and David can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we're doing two new computer labs in the middle school STEM, two in the middle school and one at the high school. So one that's going to be, the one, so we have two STEM teachers at the middle school, and those, they're being completely redone with some, I guess, state-of-the-art, much better than our typical classrooms. Yep. So they'll be used in those classrooms. And then at the high school, it's also being put in. So we had talked about our esports team. So that goes for that and the computer science CTE program. So it's kind of a dual use. So we're going to get more than one use of it, and those are actually really high-powered ones that have, I guess, I'm not even going to say what they are because I really have no clue, but they're fancy computers that can do, they're, they're good for the program, but they're also good for the esports, so.
Okay, good. Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Mr. Collins is also on vacation, it's the time of year, but for facilities, safety, and transportation, they've transitioned successfully to a new purchasing system. We mentioned Mr. Collins has a new admin in his office, so they're trained up and ready to go. They're fully functioning in the new, new program, MUNIS. You'll hear MUNIS a lot, that's what we're using now, which is the same as the town, which is nice. Summer cleaning is progressing well. High school is ahead of schedule, allowing flexibility for extra projects. We'll talk about in the building committee too, they're also working over there. As far as planned projects go right now, we have the concession stand-up grade at Godday. They're doing vents, painting, and other things, just general maintenance. We did need to install a heater there as well. There's always been winterization issues there with the pipes freezing and stuff like that. You have to drain it and all kinds of things. So they've installed, they're installing, they might be done now, a heater that they can keep at like an ambient temperature to keep that. to keep that from happening. So they are doing some demo at Aquidnic. Mr. Collins is, and he'll speak more about this when he's here, has been like a really great resource for not just facilities and for the building committee and, you know, building our new schools. He's, he's definitely proven that he's, he's an asset there, but he's also an expert in like, how can we leverage the facilities to increase the educational quality? And one of the things he's doing over at Aquidnic now is installing a magnetic whiteboard wall system. It's a lot of these things we're trying to get in the schools and trial, try now, so to see if we like them for the new building. So it's a magnetic wall, you know, typically you'd have a whiteboard or a magnet, a board like that. These are ones that you can, they're set up so you can project on them, you can write on them with a marker, but you can also use magnets to post things on it. So they're going to do a pilot, if you will, over there.
Awesome. Can I just ask?
Of course.
Did you have a question? The whiteboard thing fascinates me, right? I mean, we had chalkboards, and now we have whiteboards, right? So the whiteboard, is this like a, just a larger whiteboard or is it a, you know, I, I, I'm very curious about it. I'd love to see it when it gets demoed as it announces, so.
My, my understanding is that they're, they're bigger. So they're not defined necessarily with a tray and a border like that. It's, it's like a big, large portion of the wall.
It's great. Thank you. And maybe we can incorporate some of that into the new design of the new, new buildings, right?
Sure. And that's the intention, like, so we can try them out now, we can see how it works. We can see if teachers like it, if students enjoy it, if it's an effective tool for instruction. And if it is something that we want to pursue in the new buildings or, you know, you know, the renovated elementary schools, that's, we try it now, we implement later.
Nothing electronic about it, it's just the board.
No.
The magnetic board, you can write on it, you can erase on it, you can project on it.
Absolutely.
It's not electronic at all.
It's not, it's not electronic in the sense like it's a smartboard. But what they do is they also have the ability to project on it.
Exactly.
So you can project on it, kind of, if you were to go back.
Green, you don't need that.
Yes, so it's multi-purpose.
You don't need all that.
Yeah, it's not interactive like, like, like a smartboard would be.
It serves a lot of purposes.
Yep, absolutely.
I bet you had to clean the erasers.
I had to clean the.
But you're still using the, the white, the markers.
Ready, can, yeah.
That's it. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Any questions for the superintendent?
Thanks, Billy.
You're welcome.
No.
All right.
Oh, real quick, have we exhausted the funds that are the Twenty-First Century funds? Doing the, the new computer labs and things?
I believe we have, but I'd have to double check for sure.
Yeah, it was, that was one of the things I was going to ask you about because I was, I was reading all the legislative stuff, and they had that in there, and I thought, oh, it's not a lot of money, but what are we going to do with it?
I believe, I believe we, I believe we, I, let me, let me check.
Hundred and three or something, yeah, okay.
It was right around a hundred thousand dollars. I think we spent every nickel of it on these three labs.
Building committee.
Tim?
Bye.
Bye. Thank you. Both the building committee continues to meet regularly every two weeks. Things are progressing nicely with the project, very nicely. It's going to get exciting out there very soon, the, if it already isn't, they're already, you know, pushing dirt around. And before you know it, they'll be pouring concrete, and, you know, by the fall, they'll be erecting steel, which then I think ramps up the excitement there. So as we lead into that, you know, there's a lot of work that happens behind the scenes. I continuously to say how hard our team is working, our project manager, Colliers, Gilbane, of course, our architects, I think we have a tremendous team partnering with the town. You know, we are becoming a model project quickly in the construction world and the school building world. So the even better thing on this is that we are trending, continue to trend below budget relative to our, our cost estimates. We are approximately eighty percent contracted out with, with contracts for various contractors, for the various components of the project. We meet pretty much on a daily basis, discussing what they call their, what are they called? Jeez, I sit on these stupid things every, every day, it feels. Their scope reviews, scope review meetings, things such as window treatments and floor coverings. And you'd be amazed at the amount of different components that go into any project, let alone a school and all the, all the components. So it's exciting, and it's, it's getting better. So we are, we are happy to, to say we're certainly on time and on budget and happy with the progress so far. I'd encourage the, you know, well, there'll be photos and whatnot. Tammy and Don do a great job of keeping the site, the site that's on the school department's website, the page updated. I believe photos are, are incoming, and any and all information is there, fully transparent. No, no hidden, we've, we've had no hidden items. Things that you might expect might be an issue, soils, don't want to jinx us. But, you know, soils so far, I mean, that usually seems to be the, the bane of many projects. And at this point, soils are pretty good, pretty good. So, and we expect it to continue in that way. So, all good. Thank you for the opportunity to report.
Prevention Coalition.
All right, so I'm sure, well, Billy, Billy knows they, Middletown Prevention Coalition is working with the schools to put out their student health and wellness survey coming up. We do that every couple of years, just to get a handle on, it's an anonymous survey where the kids answer questions about, you know, are they, you know, drinking, drug, drug use or any of that, feeling safe, healthy, those kinds of things. So that'll be working with you guys to get that through with some training for the, or notes for the administrators and how to administer that. I think when, what's the timing on that sometime?
So we will have that for you very shortly for review, just so the committee can review the actual survey, and then we will approve it, you know, pending your approval in August, and then we'll roll it out with principals.
Okay. So kind of for the start of school. And then this Sunday, the twentieth, from twelve to six at the Fraternal Order Police on Mitchells, they are having a fundraiser for one of the girls who was injured in the accident in Portsmouth last month. It's called All In for Erin. So they're going to be doing lots of activities there. I guess there's a barbecue, there'll be music, and Sean Brown has donated a non-resident beach pass for raffle. So we'll be taking, people can fill out a raffle, and then they'll get their name drawn for a non-resident beach pass. So the Prevention Coalition will have a table there and doing the raffle. So that's, that's what's going on with us, and then we'll have a meeting next week.
If you need, if you want to forward that, we'd be happy to publicize that for the.
Okay, great.
I don't know that we've sent that one out, so we'd be happy to share that with families.
Again, I'm sorry.
Sunday, the twentieth. So setup's like from nine to eleven-thirty. I saw something about a bike ride, walk right at nine. And then the, the event itself with the barbecue and the raffles and tables, and there's donations. There's a, you know, a site, a GoFundMe page that's all attached to the flyer.
Right, yeah.
You guys, yeah.
We'd be happy to share that out tomorrow.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Policy, we did not have a policy subcommittee meeting this month. We're going to try to do one early August, we're looking at a date for that.
Yeah, I think the one thing that we talked about doing there, which is, we're really trying to review all the policies that some of them may no longer be relevant or so outdated or, you know, no longer relevant. So we're trying to really clean up a lot of the policies. There's hundreds of policies in there. And again, we've changed a lot of them, we've got some new ones. So that's kind of our, our mission with this next year to try and really review all those and get them cleaned up.
Anything else from anybody?
No.
No. Motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at six oh four.
Motion was made to adjourn it at six oh four. It was seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody.
Yeah.
We can still meeting?
I'm pretty sure we're meeting on.
Yeah, twenty-fourth.
Yeah.